First, actually, I called CPEOD. Then they said, "Hmm, not ours." I said, "So, can you tell me if there's a relationship between you and BNSF?" "Nope, but can't. But however, I'll give you another phone number." So they gave me the number for BNSF at Burlington Northern. And I called their number. I was told, "Well, you really should have thought before you bought there." So I thought, "Hmm, okay, that's not great." So then I started calling City Hall because one would think if structures are built in our neighborhoods, that there should be some building permit. You'd think. You'd think there'd be some kind of yellow notice about a zoning meeting or hearing to give us information so we could figure out what the hay's going on and show up and say what the hay's going on. Stop. No posting. Did any of you see any of those postings? Well, long story short, called John on the 13th and said, "What the whoop? What's going on?" He said, "What are you talking about?" And I said, "Well, there's eight super humongous red tanks, industrial tanks on Lindsay." He said, "Hmm, I just came from a meeting with Burlington Northern about a transfer station going in, and that's not cool." And I said, "Hmm, transfer station? I said, 'I think we need to talk.'" So I said, "On your way home, John, that Orlicov," because there's two Johns here, which is a separate meal, identify John Orlicov and John Gerard. So he said, "Well, I'll look into it. Okay, I'll drive home and have a look." So he was flabbergasted. And I had asked, you know, "Can we stop it? Can we get an injunction, please?" He said, "I'll look into it and try and get a legal opinion." I got notified today, yeah? So he followed up with that to get City Hall to look at this act from the legal department. Some of the-- and John Gerard and John Orlicov did say, "It seems it's a very complicated question of legality." Long and the short of it, what I've learned is that you need to-- whoever owns the tracks, the land the tracks are on, can do whatever they want. It's federal jurisdiction. That's the bad news. More bad news, and I don't know, maybe some of you are historians and trained historians and know better than I, but my sense is when the tracks went down in the 1800s, national social policy around those tracks did not evolve. To understand and appreciate that municipalities would emerge around those tracks, which has happened in Winnipeg. And so I think what we've stumbled across as the litmus on Lindsay is a gap in national policy. And this is quite alarming to discover that I think there's not much control we have. I think the only control we have was, A, we've met here today and have come together because it's going to take a village to have our voices ring out to say, "There's a problem here, and we need to change how business is conducted with the tracks as it relates to municipalities and communities." So that's sort of, I think, my frustration. I know other neighbors have expressed absolutely being flabbergasted. Have any of you seen the stakes that have gone down on the north part of Lindsay by Grant across from the gas station? Yeah, some of these. Well, that's allegedly where a transfer station is going in. I have no idea what that actually means. Somebody here may have more information, and I'll turn that over to them shortly. So things are moving really, really fast, and it seems that our neighborhood is going through a different kind of industrial revolution, which I don't think we want, and we want it stopped. We have found out that salt water, that's to me a euphemism for magnesium chloride, is in those tanks, and we are not getting straight information at all. Is it coming in a powder form in the trucks and then somehow converted to a steam to become a liquid in the trucks? We don't know. What I can tell you is last Friday, driving somewhere in the car downtown by the tracks, I got a hit of chlorine that made my eyes water, my lungs tighten, and I had an acrid taste in my mouth. I know my neighbor, friend, who's in the area, experienced different kinds of noxious kinds of stuff. Maybe some of you have also experienced that last Thursday. And I called John Orlicov, who called Manitoba Conservation to come out. And I saw Manitoba Conservation on the way home about 6:58 and said, "Hmm, it sort of still smelled of bay flag. You're out, and hope you take some, you know, analysis here and let us know what's going on because this is different. This is very different for something that's supposed to be salt water." So I didn't hear back, so I actually did a follow-up call this week and talked to the guy who's on the tracks. And I said, "So, what did you find out?" And he said, "Nothing." I said, "Hmm, maybe you could tell me, what do you mean? How did you assess that?" He said, "I sniffed." Sniffed ass. And there was a puddle by his feet, right? So he took no samples and had no tools or measures or ways to figure that out. So anyways, long story short, there are tanks there. There's more stuff happening. We have a census magnesium chloride. I should say that we did invite BNSF to be here this evening. We invited many people to be here this evening. And Amy Macbeth, who's their senior PR person, gave an email saying that, yes, she was in town earlier this week for meetings, and no, she couldn't be here this evening. And I did ask if there was any other delegates that could be here for BNSF. No delegates. Joyce Bateman has also-- on the 13th, I emailed John Orlicov, John Gerard, Joyce Bateman, Minister Ashton, who we still haven't heard back from. And it was only when I followed up last Friday to Ms. Bateman's office, and I actually got a hearing, and she said she couldn't get my email. I said, "Well, I sent it, I'm just thinking to you again." And I never got a response either by phone or by email from Ms. Bateman. But I had looped in John Orlicov and John Gerard. And I think John Orlicov had put a letter out, and he can speak to that, and there was a response. And she unfortunately was not able to join us this evening either, as was Mayor Sam Cades, as was-- who am I missing? Anyways, and many of the other neighbors. So that's sort of where I'm at for the moment in terms of what brought me to it.
So I'll just go really quickly. And by means, if I miss something, or you're not sure what I'm talking about, ask the question after. So I guess our position, well, my position is, and I can't speak for the whole City Hall, but I can speak for many city councilors, is the industrialization of that rail line is completely inappropriate and should not happen. So we should clear the air on that. So that's really important because I have been meeting with different groups, and I state that to either Ford Industries, or if it's BNSF, or whoever I'm meeting, and tell them, "Yes, I understand your position, but understand mine. I don't want you here." Understand that. And you do what you have to do, and we'll do what we have to do on our side. But we also have to recognize that if they are there, what are we going to do? But that's really part B for me. I'm still on part A. And part A is, what options does the city have to do anything here? And we talked a little bit about federal jurisdiction. Well, it's true. I can give you all the terminologies and the subsections and clauses, and if you want to give me a call. This is another one of those joyous events where I've learned more about railroads than I ever thought I would. You know, I've learned about base treatment kinds. I never thought I'd know that much either. But again, so we can cite you and show you where the sections are in the Transportation Act. But pretty well what it does is provides the rail line lands exclusive rights to use a land as they see fit to operate the rail line. That's generally what the rules are. They don't have to ask for permits. They don't have to ask for rezoning, building permits or rezoning. They do have to adhere to what's called an environmental impact study, but again, that's provincial, that's not civic. They have to-- that's about it that I know of. On the civic level, they don't have to do anything for us. They can do as they see fit because that is, we are the third level government down. I completely, completely think that is just disgusting. There's only one authority in the city that should be deciding how to use land. You may not always agree with what we decide, but that is your local city council. They decide how land is used in the city, not Ottawa, not a rail line from somewhere else. We decide, and then you go through the rezoning process, and that allows you input. So they say, "We want to convert those lands that are on the BNSF line." Well, those lands are actually zoned residential. So theoretically, they have to, well, they are, so theoretically, they'd have to come back to a rezoning for us. But again, because they can use the land as they see fit, they don't have to. So again, so just to clarify where we are on the legal side of things, because people have been wondering about the injunction. So we gave it a shot. And generally, what happened in the end, where we are right now today, we're not at the end yet. While we continue to work on the legalities of the silos, again, as Judy said, the laws are very complicated. It splits about 17 different ways. However, the city's position right now is while we continue to work on the legalities of the silos, the city does not have a legal position to prevent the Can Do station. We don't. We can't do an injunction. There's no legal basis for us to do anything on that one. The silos, because the question about, I won't get into it because it's legal stuff. I'm not sure Ford's here or not, but again, regardless, the city does believe they have a position. They're just trying to work that out now. So the silos, maybe, but I don't know.
Do you have information?
Yes.
Call for the Can Do station.
What is that station called over at the BNSF on Grant? And the question was, what is that station called? The transfer station? Transload station, they call it? That's the planning for Grant and Lindsay, where those flags are going up? You don't see that yet. You'll see, you don't see anything yet, you will. That's a transload station from Burlington Northern Santa Fe that's contracted Can Do to operate a transload station there.
And is that me?
A transload, oh, sorry, transload, yeah. Just raise your hands, you know, I've been verbiage. A transload station. What a transload station is, is they bring trucks in, and they unload things, pipes and whatever, onto trucks, and then the trucks drive away. Can Do is, they call those shortliners, are called. So they're rail line, they're people who operate shortlines for larger companies.
Is nothing new at Can Do?
No, no, sorry. Oh, I see. Yes, no, not at all. No, they, face to face, clarify that. No, they're just, they're a decent company, or they run shortlines?
Can I just ask, when they are offloading?
Yeah.
That means flatbeds are coming in, trucks, trains offloading something into a transfer station, trucks, flatbed trucks, that's huge trucks that would carry a railcar like a seven truck comes in and picks this up, and then leaves?
I don't know the exact details of what, how they do it, but I don't believe it's the, I think you're talking to those container trucks, where you pick up the whole container and drop it on?
Right.
I don't believe so. Again, they don't tell me. They haven't told me anything. But it is posted at the Burlington Northern Santa Fe website. It's actually on our website as well, what the design is. But my understanding is more of a crane pickup thing, pipes, stuff like that. But again, they have no duty to tell us in the form of what's being delivered and dropped off. Yes?
Is there a wireless wire? Do you have this one? Do you have a thing on it? Does the microphone right here, it's wireless?
I can repeat the question for you. Why, why Burlington Northern Santa Fe decided to do this in the middle of residential neighborhood? Is that a fair question? Because this is their only transloading area they have available. That's why. Because this is the spot. They own it, they own the land. They have nowhere else to be transloaded. So they have a demand, and they want to meet the demand, and this is where they can do it at.
Is that even, is that what you're talking about? Or is it going to be blocked here? It's important that people hear that.
Hi, okay, question. So if they're going to be doing this loading at that corner, that's going to block the train line crossing Grant there, right?
I don't think so. They do it between the rail line. Like the carts will be like, as they're unloading, they won't be blocking, but as the trucks are trying to get in, out, back onto Grant, they'll be causing some traffic problems, and on the cordon side as well.
So are they not going to be using trains to get this in?
Yeah, yeah, but the trains will park not over the line, not over Grants. I guess they could, but my, they've been doing it at the other side for a while. The trains wouldn't park, in my opinion. Again, they don't tell me this, but I'm assuming the trains aren't parking over Grant. They have room to park down there, and then they'd unload and then go down.
Was there any prior knowledge of this occurring, other than people waking up in the morning and finding these colorful containers? Yes?
The silos, no. The BNSF, the transloading station, guys are already in discussions with them on--
So how could they have discussed that with you without indicating that they're going to be doing these silos?
Two different lines. I didn't speak with Burlington Northern Santa Fe. I spoke with Can Do because they were the applicant that was, they wanted to build, and did out of the courtesy.
So how many other, how many other tails to this dragon? How many other lines are involved?
I don't, how many other lines?
Yeah, how much, how many other--
Opportunities for more development?
Yeah, that can possibly be--
Good question. I asked, I did have a meeting recently with Burlington Northern on that, and again, they gave me a very nice answer, but not a definitive answer. They said, "At this time, this is all we're planning." I said, "Well, what about the future? Do you have any more pad spaces that you can do?" They said, "Well, at this time, this is all we're planning."
So you basically got nothing?
They don't have to give you anything, yeah. That's right.
And this is so important because with the development, what is coming in the future? That's been my fear from the very beginning. What's next?
They have a question. About almost three years ago now, they were taking all our gardens away. We had a garden three years then. And Winnipeg Harvest got a lot of that, you know? And so I was upset about it, and I wrote, Burlington Northern Santa Fe, and I emailed them, actually. I have the letter at home. And they gave us back the gardens for one year, which was a bit too action. But what they told me about the property was that they were going to be selling it and using it for other purposes. So I just thought you should know that.
I actually have a question too, but I can pass the mic. It's a quick one. It actually has to do with permits and things like that. You mentioned that the city has no jurisdiction around the legalities associated with building. And I'm wondering about the Can Do station. When I noticed the stakes, it looks like there's a road or something that's going to be constructed. Any history on permit acquisition or any other organization or group who--
Yeah, where the city does come involved with the Grant and Lindsay one is allowing that or not allowing that cutout on that side.
Are they selling the park?
No.
Is that labor?
What is, what is. Yeah, I agree with you, but yeah. No, that's what, that's where the city's involvement is, is in that approach, whether the cutout, they want to put the cutout there. We've asked the city, until such time as the environmental impact study is done, and until such time as they can do, as a neighborly consultation. We don't want to allow that. But I'll be very honest with you, if we don't allow that cutout to happen and they build that station, it's going to be, cordon will be a complete mess. Because all that traffic will be looping right back onto cordon through the middle. So that's where we have to look at some realities as well. But again, at this point, we've asked our permits office to hold on that. We may not have a legal footing which allows you to do this any longer because now our legal opinion's in. But I've asked that at least so Can Do can explain to you why they want to have that cutout. They are, and that's, I think, that's coming forward. But again, I can't speak for the company even, or force them to.
Hi, my name is Wendy, and I live on Renfrew. And I'm wondering about, you said that this is covered by the Federal Transportation Act, but the other piece, so essentially, they can do whatever they want. But the other piece that I'm not understanding is the environmental impact. So that certainly, I would think, has equal weight. So we're dealing now with noise pollution, with potential chemical pollution. We have a potential, you know, if there's a spill, whatever the heck it is, can get into groundwater. So that site could be lost forever for future development if we wanted to put housing so the remediation of the, of land would be significant. So I don't understand where the environmental piece went. So even if the Transportation Act trumps everything else and seems to give people carte blanche with no responsibility, where are all the environmental impact studies that are required? I don't understand.
Once we had that incident on a weekend, and the result came back as unconclusive, I guess they'll say the least, we followed up on that as well. And actually, I got a call from the province. And the province said, "Just wanted to let us know that they're contacting BNSF already, and they'll be sitting down to do, to do an assessment, an environmental impact assessment with them. And the results on that will come forward."
So isn't that a big backward in order? So wouldn't you apply for a permit?
Hello, I'm sorry. Here you go. But wouldn't, wouldn't a company need to apply for a permit? I mean, that seems to be the way we live these days. I mean--
I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure why--
But from a legal standpoint, though, so if we're talking about we don't have any legal weight, is there not the environmental act that-- So that's a Canadian, that's a federal act, so not just provincial, but that has federal responsibility. So if the Transportation Act is federal, why doesn't the same weight apply to environmental situations?
And I hate to defer it because you're not here, but that's really for your MP. Like, I really don't know all those legalities and those laws and those things, but the member of parliament should be able to help with that. We're focusing on our civic level. I agree, there should be some trumping. But that Transportation Act, it probably does refer to it. It's about 800 pages.
But if we knew that, then doesn't that sort of, if we're talking about injunctions and environmental stuff trumps everything else--
The city could do, yeah. But the city wouldn't be doing that. That'd be coming from another level of government, which I was hoping would happen, that another level of government would put an injunction because the environmental impacts and federal regulation has to be met, or something has to be met. Civically, though, we can, we look at permits, and we look at our criteria, and they don't need to talk to us about any of that. Now, the environmental impact study and other things at the federal level, that's why I was hoping we'd find out more, but I'm not privy to that this time. I'll keep hunting, but--
I'll take the microphone. I just prefer-- Hi, a couple of things. I don't know why the city can't trigger that federal environmental study. And I think everybody here would like the city to do that. Yeah, show of hands? Show of hands?
I don't think, I'm not sure if there is one. Like--
I don't know, but I'm putting it back to you, and I'm putting it back to John Gerard as well. John Gerard has actually shared with us that there was a spill of magnesium chloride by Ford Distributors further north on the Lindsay tracks three years ago. And I don't know if John wants to make a brief comment about that. And there's also a lady back here that's got some questions as well. So maybe I'll, she was first, and then two. So I just didn't want that to get lost about the importance of the environmental risks. All chemicals have risks, and so I really believe it's a really serious matter to get the proper studies happening.
Can I say something here? I'm for distributors. I want to respond to--
Excuse me, we're taking turns here. That one is first. And that gentleman up there, let's go. Just a quick question. Has there been any precedent set to dealing with Burlington Northern in this same situation anywhere else, any other communities or cities that we know of?
As a Google scientist, many of us are, there are some cases out there that, in the States, different laws, though, different requirements. I couldn't find anything Canadian, though. But again, my research capacity is pretty limited.
Long-term residence on Lindsay. Maybe this is naive, but it seems to me that the feds are breaking their laws. I think, as dated as the BNA Act, states you're not allowed to damage a neighbor's property. You can't build a lot up so high that you're actually far than out, et cetera. There's an example. If you define, if you devalue, define damage as the devaluation of a person's property, then have you not broken our rule? That's my question. The feds--
The city's rule?
No, I'm just saying, the federal government, this is a federal issue. And a federal directive is that you cannot damage your neighbor's property. Does that mean they're above the law, they can damage any neighbor's property? But neighbors don't damage each other's? How do we read this? This goes back to the BNA Act. I think this is a good idea in the Constitution too.
And I know, see, I'm just trying to keep my, because I'm with you in the regards that I am a resident, and I think this is, the industrialization of BNSF line is a really, really bad idea for the whole neighborhood. But I'm also the city councillor, so I have to be very careful. There, in the Transportation Act and in a few other acts, there are some civil remedies for people, but they're not municipal, they're civil. Again, a lawyer, a crowd, maybe the Red Association have a line, would discuss that with their own legal counsel. But, so there is stuff in there about damages and recourses for people on the rail line.
Just to sell self, this is just leaving the mask.
And I believe the permits to move the tanks were put through, what, a year ago?
Yeah, and they went through the police and our street works. We get a lot of those requests coming.
Okay, but we certainly didn't get any notice.
No, no.
Now, there is a gentleman here from Ford, in fairness, we will turn it over to him. And maybe you could state your name and your role.
Okay, my name is Willie. If you want to know about my role, we're a family business, Ford distributors, and I call myself the nephew. That's basically my role in the family business. I just want to clarify something here. I'm not here to answer any questions, but when it comes up to the question, what is in these tanks, I think there needs to be some clarification here. We provided John Olikov here with an MSD sheet, which stipulates exactly what the content is of that product. The plain and simple explanation is it is seawater because it comes out of the salt lakes in Utah. What North American salt, our supplier does, they harvest salt out of it, and the brine that is left has the ability to draw moisture from the air, and somebody figured out that is a great way for dust suppression. The product that comes in in railcars in liquid forms, not bagged, it's not diluted, goes into our trucks and is sprayed on gravel roads across the province within the city limits for Manitoba highways. All municipalities in the province of Manitoba use that product. The form it comes in, in these railcars, goes onto our trucks. If you watch in our trucks, you see the spray bar right behind it. That's how it is sprayed on gravel roads. Have environmental studies been done? If you own a cottage anywhere in any resort, the product is sprayed there. It has been tested from conservation Manitoba. Manitoba highways require lab testing. Every single road is tested. So I'm saying, if there's any misleading information, what is in the tanks, it is environmentally friendly dust control.
Thank you very much. Now, what I'm confused about, and is, does it come in a powder form and then have steam applied to turn it into a liquid form as it enters the tanks?
We don't handle that at all. My legal client is also available in bags for fish tanks. Excuse, we don't handle that in quantity. And the quantity is available in bagged forms. I got some requests, people using for their fish tanks, they're looking for flake or bagged magnesium chloride. We don't handle it. The only other product that I know is used as dust control is calcium chloride, and that comes in flake form. The same product that we're talking about goes in the same form right now in sand piles that is sprayed on city roads for deicing. So that is the product that we're handling.
So to clarify, the product that you're handling on the tracks there is in liquid, and it's used as a dust control and not for deicing? For both? Okay, that's what I understood, magnesium chloride as a deicing. So then you have contracts with the city of Winnipeg, and you have contracts with the government of Manitoba. and you have contracts with the government of Manitoba and you have contracts with the federal government as well?
City of Winnipeg dust control and deicing goes for tender, which we have competition. So we have the city of Winnipeg dust control contract. Unfortunately, we do not have the city of Winnipeg deicing contract. We have deicing contracts with some of Manitoba highways. This year's tender bid for deicing has not come out yet. But if you check with Manitoba highways, the volume, Ford Distributors had about eighty percent of Manitoba highways dust control tender and last year about seventy-five percent of their deicing tender.
I'm so glad you're here. More questions for you. So you're located in Selkirk or, wait, wait, hang on a second, or St. Andrews? Okay. Okay, so maybe John has answers to this or the nephew does, I'm not sure who. But my understanding is there are thirty industrial zones in the city of Winnipeg for things like tanks and trucks. And I am confused if a business from rural Manitoba that does industrial work and there are thirty industrial safe locations not in the heart of a residential community, how is it, sir, that your uncle's business ended up in the heart of one of the oldest residential communities that has had a very peaceful coexistence with the trains since they went in?
Which is, I'm telling you, you do not understand how railroads work, how product is imported or exported for that matter into Canada and from Canada. Railroad business transports a lot of goods, from lumber to paper to who knows what, including liquid dust control.
I think you entirely missed our point. And this gentleman here would like to speak.
Yes, my name is Alan Vermette. I'm a resident on Lindsay. I'm not so much concerned with the contents of these tanks. When I saw the tanks go up, I, I've seen their trucks go back and forth all summer. I know that transport dust control material is used province-wide on roads and stuff like that. So I'm assuming that it's gone through approval processes. Plus, we've got the federal agencies that can monitor the transport and, and storage of dangerous goods. I think that's an important aspect, but my main trigger was what the, is that going up here for? This is just a little spur line, a rail spur line, which we're all accustomed to seeing in many past years. Wouldn't the odd train going back and forth in these little, I don't know what they do exactly, but they switch cars from one to the other and switch tracks. And that's what I viewed the use of this area as. Now all of a sudden, we've got humongous storage tanks. To me, that's a form of warehousing. That's storing liquids. That is not what residents move into the area with the understanding if they're willing to live beside a little spur line or rail line. It's fair that we should anticipate what the future use is going to be. This is not anticipated use, nor should it be an acceptable use.
It seems kind of obvious. Other questions? Hands? Pardon? Yes, okay, John Gerard. Here we go. Just the microphone girl. Oh, he's got, Daminge should wake up. John Gerard?
Okay, we'll, we'll try. Welcome, everyone. This has clearly got a lot of interest from the number of people who've come out, a lot of concern about what's happening. I think that quite a bit of that concern is from the lack of any advance warning that this was going to happen and any advanced discussion about what was about to happen. Let me speak about several things. When Judy called me up initially, one of the things that she was very concerned about is that this line might somehow connect to Centerport. But as Centerport grew, there would be a lot more traffic along this line. So I have talked to Diane Gray, who is at Centerport, CEO, and she says this line is not the one that connects to Centerport and we don't have to worry about this line being used increasingly because of Centerport. Now, that doesn't mean that it may not be used increasingly for other reasons, but just that's one thing that we can kind of take off the table, Judy. The second major issue, and I should address from a provincial perspective, there are environmental regulations, which are, some are federal and some are provincial. The Department of Conservation, which John Olikoff mentioned, is a provincial Department of Conservation, which came out and did the inspection. And I think it's important to add that the Department of Conservation does check where there are chemical spills. And so if you come across a situation where there's a chemical spill you're concerned about, increase the emergency number, is that right? That's on their conservation website, Department of Conservation website, for you to call and let them know that there's been spilled and that they will come out and check. Now, the, there is also some, both provincial and fesional responsibilities in terms of hazardous materials. When you're talking about environmental permits or licenses, there are, there are different levels. And I'm sure that one of the first things that the Department of Conservation from a provincial perspective would do is to look, you know, are there chemicals being used or processes being used which would mean that you would need to have a certain type of environmental clearance? And I can't give you the answer. As, as you've heard already, the chemical which is being used is magnesium chloride. Magnesium chloride is like table salt, except instead of being sodium chloride, it's magnesium chloride. But it happens to be used for dust control and, and for deicing. Certainly from a perspective of whether or not it would need to be environmental or hazardous material licensing, it would depend in terms of how things were classified. Now, I, I did get a chance to talk to Brian Sweeney, who is from BNSF in Minneapolis today. Thanks to Judy's emails flying back and forth, he, he said, number one, that they realized they made a big mistake.